You go first, I'm gonna review the work. But I don't know if you're special in the state and am gonna apply for it later than you do. Four months, thirty seconds. Can't really do the third until it's over.
It gives some.
Oh, actually. Yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah. Was this the right thing?
Just don't press the person you can do it for. Because it's expensive.
It was just. It's like you never see it.
No.
She's supposed to make your orders.
It doesn't meet up to some of the other.
It's already. I, I, it's before I've seen. Should get out. But I said, so is, is someone. I think it's gotta happen.
It's really horrible.
Start with two. I didn't do it, but actually. To get out.
All the other things she thinks too.
Insurance.
But, uh.
And even more elevation is show them what can do.
I just. Very, 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 very.
So I kinda need to do confirmation, so. So I'm applying.
But what's our first floor? We should try.
First floor, first floor elevation.
Before the other.
Trying to. The rest of.
So.
So.
Your pieces. Over here, the next year to me goes like, sign the papers, they're gonna be like. It's getting better.
Right, we tell ourselves we're never.
I know, I have all these little long good questions, but like. But same thing is, uh. I, some. Also that is.
So you know, like, it was moving with that.
For a moment, so.
Yeah. It's a little worry, but I pass it off. It's like, it's all, uh. You plan it up. I asked Roger about this one, Rose, and he said.
For the, um.
You asked.
The portion on the, on the.
Yeah, on the property. I just told him, well, someone might ask. You're not, so. I think not.
When they're done with us taking these.
Check. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we went, it's been fun.
So nice.
Yesterday.
Beautiful.
What did it go? Uh, it went fine, we got approval, they do want, um, they, there were eight trees that were moving from right away. And they, they do want sixteen, find it back, find a place for them somewhere. Shouldn't negotiate it, I'm done, cause two of them are dead, but. So I said, well, we're gonna put a lot of trees over, on, on golf course. So there's, there's, and they got all that furniture, so I don't think.
Oh, oh, yeah. Well, they get you credit or whatever.
Uh, no, not yet, so I gotta work with Brian about. Just find a spot for sixteen. Specific trees.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Not a big deal.
It's good to see him back today.
I'm going to for the variants.
Yeah.
Next week.
You do something for me.
Should be good.
How are you? Good, how are you? Hey Bobby.
Hi Jordan, how's it going?
Hey Jordan.
See, sir, you're doing.
I've been accounting your brother, many early morning club watching their dogs, yeah. So.
You could've come.
He, he had, he had a little bit of. They, you know, they, they turned that, because it was still worth it now. And they got a winner with it. Yeah, but. He had to work there.
I mean, first location, East Spirit Rapids.
Are you out?
Once you have it, it's every six months.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's just like a, an empty, we just go to the. Or better, uh, we're getting slightly newer and stuff.
It's cool you don't do that, I thought about you. I don't know if I could stand.
I come on my second tour. If you have three years, I think I might be able to. It's not a huge. No, but I was. Oh, I actually don't.
Are, are you pro development?
Yeah. I live in a small town, so. Chris, do you come to every single one of them?
Um, I don't play as much, I, I don't do the work anymore.
Okay. I'm on the planning commission in East Spirit Rapids.
Oh, interesting.
Maybe once every six months through somewhere. It's, it's very, it's very slow.
Depends on what you bring.
Yeah.
And I, I seem to bring things I bring.
So almost like.
Yeah, it, it totally really depends.
Yeah. I've had some projects, like when I, like I had a good surprise.
We have like. Every inch of this place, you know, like fire hazard, the Lord.
Yeah.
You know, H group bill, community room bill, uh, this. We took the commercial zoning code, we had, we said we set it on it, almost every six months, we give an update, talk about what you're doing. We would regularly have a dozen, two with on yes. Yeah.
The best.
Depends on.
This is where you go about zoning, you know, this project, um, I had a meeting at Tower. I know that you've asked some of the coworkers about.
I mean, that's your schedule, I don't know why I asked.
No, 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 it's good, and I, so, um, just architectural folks and site folks at Tower right now.
Yeah.
Their, these initial staffs, like zones.
So here's, here's what my concern has to say, site can come, so they're gonna see. That's what we should, they're gonna, you guys will be done, you're gonna want to start cycling, you know, have bigger, uh, plus facade.
Okay, I didn't know I was supposed to.
Right, and so I just don't want, that just puts us, us to, you know, to, you know, it's just a pressure on us, right? And that's why I, I, that is the key, that is why I, I guess, I think, I feel like there's gonna be some mismatch at some point in the.
Absolutely, and so, I mean, I, I really wanna take you up back and offer all this, we're sitting down with us, and we're going through it. So they're, they're just putting some nice job into it. I think so, whatever. It's probably gonna come from maybe Steve or Tim.
So if you can make that.
Requesting a file, you know, to, to, you know, go through this. Um, to prove this. He's one of theirs, he's a president, so.
You know, the rain.
But, so that, that should become. So she confused.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they were gonna talk to their. They were gonna talk amongst themselves. I, I mean, I can't think of these kind of discussions with your, that, which says, it's for us to say. For us to talk about what, to be part of the project, and what we should be, or just, you know, which was, was still, right? And what is it like? Prior to the. Justice and, uh, I think it's part of the. It would've been a much easier discussion, but I think they're really okay. Well, it's turned out that that skated off with the, for those thirty to sixty day park, depending on, sort of, gas. Also, depending on, they're silent, so, so, so where's the gas is working in our, uh, park? On Water, on Water Street, we start from Park, move east. Around the same time that you guys are doing, park. And have a closed water mix, so, um. We had this on your team, that was, we need to be mindful of the electricity they have in Water Street access, or, uh, of the rest. Yeah, I, uh, all chapter, uh, that, that's always gonna be my hand to help mine. We have some, so I don't know if the city's help, what's a center, center of property, you guys take. Right away, towards it, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I, this is only just. So we manage, right, I think, but not, I don't feel, it's a burden to me.
No.
We still. One of them is the dray road. I see she's just trying to go on the drive.
We're going both ways, I was like, I'm glad, I was like, just in case, tell her whenever she can.
But will we soon?
So do you think in April, you guys will want?
All right, Bobby, you ready for us?
Um, yeah, my computer should be up in time for the presentation.
All right. I'll talk slowly. Hi, good evening. All right, thanks everyone for your patience, we will call to order this Thursday, March seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting of the City Kalamazoo Planning Commission. If we can get a roll call vote, or get a roll call.
Yeah. Thank you Chair Milliken. Um, let's see, Burgess.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
De Senzo.
Here.
Harrison. Milliken.
Here.
Patelco. Pitts.
Here.
Anne Swann.
All right, thank you, we have Quorum, uh, we received an agenda for this evening's meeting, is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Nope, no changes.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
A move for approval of the agenda.
Motion by Burgess, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Curtis, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Excellent, we also got the minutes from the February first meeting, any comments, changes, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve those February first minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Curtis, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by De Senzo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, any communications and announcements?
Um, no, no communications and announcements.
Okay, then we'll move right into public hearings, as a reminder, uh, with the public hearings, we'll hear from staff, then we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll open the public hearing. Members of the audience will have three minutes to come up, uh, we'll ask that you state your name and your address, um, and maybe write your name on the pad up there as well, so that we can get that right in the minutes. Um, and give your comments, and then we'll close the public hearing, if you're watching online, that phone number to call in is eight eight eight, three eight two, nine five five six. And we'll take your comments after, um, the folks that are in the audience have a chance to, to speak. If you want to call in on something not related to this specific public hearing item, there will be an opportunity later in the agenda, with the same phone number, and we'll take those comments at that time. So with that, we will open up public hearing, PC twenty twenty four point oh seven, the vacation of the northern seventeen feet of West Water Street between North Park Street and Northwest Nidge Avenue.
Beth, do you know if you gotta switch the inputs, it's not displaying on my computer? There you go, thank you. Thank you Chair Milliken, um, in front of you tonight is a, a request, it's a partial street vacation, a little different than some of the other ones, we've had a good mix of different types as this arena's moved forward. This request is to vacate the northern seventeen feet of West Water Street between North Park and Northwest Nidge, um, for reference, the right of way itself is sixty six feet wide, um, total. Just a little bit of background, um, before we got here, for the, the context, in the recent months, there's been, uh, the Eleanor and Cooley Street Vacation, and then the, the Blue Vacation, where some unimproved roads. And then you can see in purple and orange are Cooley and another alley, uh, which has assembled the, the big square here. And now in front of us, a little later, um, is a request to vacate the northern seventeen feet, um, which you could probably determine is extending the, would, would potentially expand the buildable area for the, the arena. I know in the applicant's presentation, they'll have some more of the layout, but generally, north of the creek there, um, is where the arena is, and then the parking facilities and outdoor area is shown to the south side of the creek. Um, taking a closer look at this area, um, here's a, a zoom in of one of the surveys there, the, the seventeen feet comes in just a little bit from that northern curb line, and, um. In the, in, in recent weeks and months, there's been utility coordination for the utility work that would go in and around the property. So those conversations and designs have been taking into account this narrower road right of way, and, you know, so far it's looking like all of that can, can fit. Um, the, an extra, um, unique item to this one is, the applicant proposes with the vacated seventeen feet, to put, um, over that, uh, four foot easement back to the city for, um, it's a sidewalk and utilities. The nature for that extra request is, in the, um, designs for the parking structure, there's underground footings, and those, the building would, is proposed to be at the property line, but those would have to be wider and go out into the road. For construction projects, the, the city doesn't want, um, physical buildings above ground or below ground in the right of way, so, um, a way to make sure that the sidewalk widths and that open space can be done. That's why the four foot easement back to the city is coming into play, to keep the footers potentially out of the right of way, but make sure that the surface still has a public pass through. It's a mechanism the city's used before, um, where due to some old natures or sidewalks put in the wrong spot, and easement, yeah, to make sure access can be maintained. So that is, um, something that they're proposing, um, so it, I think the original consideration was thirteen feet, so your seventeen feet gets you where you need to go. Uh, a couple, here's a couple photographs of, of the area, this is looking east, so the development of, for the future arena would be on the, the left side of the screen there. Um, all of the properties there on the other side of the road are owned by the applicant, all the portions adjacent to the area to be vacated are, um, owned by the applicant. And then here is the view, Water Street looking back west, where the arena would be on the right side, and again, that seventeen feet is just a little bit past the curb there onto the right. And just for, uh, you know, zooming in right on that area, that's looking right down the middle of this, uh, potentially vacated area. So for what is proposed, you know how it all fits in, um, this is a, a schematic, if you're looking down Water Street, this would be looking to the west. Um, and you can see the, the dimensions down there for the sidewalks, the roadways, um, in that utility coordination meeting, road widths, design and all that's been taken into effect. While it is a narrow right of way, the road is still designed to meet the maximum width needed, so it's big enough for the public services vehicles, uh, the fire trucks, and then, you know, obviously, any of the access on the north side could still be maintained. Um, if it fits our largest vehicles, they're designed for the, you know, the most you need to respond. And then the, uh, parking garage you see there would be, you know, about four feet in on the future property line, and then under that sidewalk a little bit, probably some, some foundations. So that's, um, a reason in addition, it isn't just because the applicant can't fit the parking garage, the idea, um, they may have it in some of their more renderings is, where that creek would be between the parking structure and the arena, um, the intent is to create a more open feel there, so. Getting a little bit more of that to the south opens up that area, less shadow effect, um, was a, a big motivator to look for a little bit of space here on the north side of Water Street. Um, going over the various map scenarios, um, you can see this aerial photo here, covering that northern seventeen feet of the road, um, West Nidge is on the, um, on the left, Park Street on the right there. And, you know, Cooley and all that is now gone to the north, the, the road is there, but it's all part of the land now. Um, looking at the zoning map, um, you could see everything adjacent to it is Zone D two, um, where the rest of the prop, uh, arena property would be that, and then, and arena is a approved land use in that zone. Here's the existing land use, um, the red is commercial, the blue is vacant or not classified, and you can see with all the recent demolitions, it reflects on that map there. And lastly on the maps is the future land use map, um, the, this stretch of Water Street and the, the rest of the area is all shown in the downtown classification. Um, the, instead of the zoning ordinance, the standards for a street vacation come out of the, um, street vacation policy, which is a city commission policy, and in the staff report here, I'll go over those and how staff came to their, uh, recommendation on this. A is the right of way is unimproved, that does not apply in this case, cause the road is improved, it is there, it is used. Um, the right of way is improved, but is not publicly used, or sees limited use by the public, and if there is a limited use by the public, a parallel route in close proximity exists. Um, the trunk lines to the north and south of this being Michigan Avenue and Kalamazoo Avenue handle the bulk of traffic now, and are designed to handle the bulk of traffic after the two-way conversion. In those, uh, pre, um, meetings about the utility relocation, the traffic flows are being looked at, or the design for, um, the future two-way conversion. Um, so it's covered even then as well, um, for the two-way conversion, that it, it, Water Street isn't seen as a primary east-west route. Vacation of the right of way would not impede access to any adjacent property owner to their property, um, the applicant owns all of the land on the north side of the vacation, and if approved, it would be absorbed into their parcels. Um, the area of vacation is contained within the, the northern half, it doesn't cross the halfway line, and then all of the forms of transportation that exist today, sidewalk, street, curb, um, is all gonna be maintained afterwards in the, um, future right of way with. All adjacent property owners in the right of way must indicate their support of the vacation request in writing, uh, the applicant CD Arena owns all of the properties adjacent to this segment of West Water Street, um, because they're only touching that one side of the road with their request. The vacation will not impede the city in meeting its transportation goals, um, these will not be impeded, um, the consideration and design and the reconstruction of the roadway, um, will allow this road to be redeveloped in line with the, uh, street design manual of the city. Um, where city projects aren't ongoing, it's, um, when there's street redevelopment for a project, we look that they align it with the street design manual, and in their drafts here so far, they've demonstrated they can meet all those minimum widths for your pedestrian amenities, or bike parking, things like that. Um, the vacation will not impact existing and planned utilities in the right of way, um, the developers' proposed relocation is feasible, and they're developing the final utility relocation plan in coordination with the city staff, and that'll all be worked out before permitting and construction. The applicant has the letters from the, um, private utilities in this section of right of way, and, um, I'd say, I'd guess, Tim Stewart might know a little more, they're probably about ninety percent of the way there on the, the utilities. ninety percent of the way there on the the utilities. So it's all looking like it's going to fit in there just fine. And the, yeah, that pretty much covers the utilities. And the vacation will not impede the work of the Department of Kalamazoo Public Safety or the Public Services Department. This request has been evaluated both in the utility coordination meetings and then we check in with staff on any street request and these were evaluated. And both departments can, don't see that it would impede their ability to do their work. So that's the the presentation, staff recommends approval, and there was a couple of conditions on there as well.
Great, thank you. Any technical questions for staff at this time?
Just one.
Okay.
I was just curious, what is the standard width of the sidewalk?
I would say standard is five feet is what you would see in most residential areas. I think five feet is a minimum ADA. Usually when we're looking for something wider or more pedestrian-focused, street design manuals start to see six to eight.
Other technical questions for staff?
Uh, I suppose that sort of begs the question of, will there be, I'm sorry, I flipped away from the cross-section, enough width for a sidewalk in a pedestrian-heavy area?
Yep, they, on this, it's shown to be six foot on one side, ten foot on the other, and I believe the minimum in the street design manual is six feet.
Thanks.
One question with the vacating a road halfway, sort of like this, I haven't seen this sort of situation before. Is there anything that needs to be done from the city's perspective or anything like that with like relining the road where like you're changing the center line of the road? Is that something that would happen regardless of the, the, is that center going forward? Or is that something that would be put upon the applicant when those renovations are occurring? What would that entail from a logistics point of view?
Yeah, whether, I, I, whether it's aligned in the center of that future right-of-way, I, I, I don't know. We have these draft ones or these, these draft concepts. But A, before the utility work is done and then it's repaved when it's done, there's going to be a full plan for that that would show how it would go back. Now, depending on the timing, maybe there's just a rough cover before while the building's built. That's a long way of saying in the path to site plan approval, we would need to see all the road design and layouts. So the real nitty-gritty details would be evaluated then. And then that's where it would be evaluated to make sure that what's placed there meets all the the city standards.
Other questions for staff? My only question in the, and I don't need specifics, but in the easement language, is that sufficiently cover maintenance, seasonal and ongoing, at least in your guys' staff satisfaction?
Yeah, we don't have the the easement language, but it's a method we've used before on other projects. A recent one I could think of, I think two feet of sidewalk in front of the Creamery was put in an easement just like this. So there is some boilerplate language which basically treats it open to the public in perpetuity and the city to go in, just as if it was a right-of-way.
And that boilerplate language talks about maintenance and repairs and, okay.
Yep.
Good. If nothing else, then we'll hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Let's get our... You guys want to move this up here, Matt?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, just want to introduce ourselves. I'm Tim Stewart with Hurley Stewart Engineers at 2800 South 11th Street in Kalamazoo.
I'm Pete Mitchell, I'm the owner's rep. I live in Grand Rapids. I don't know if you guys want my address, but...
So we're going to just give you a quick overview, since we haven't been in front of you in a little while, about the project, just a, just a, a quick overview, and then we'll dive into the Water Street vacation. So I'll let Pete kick us off here.
Do I do it here?
No, let's go to the, we'll just ask her.
Nice slide. Uh, so just to give you kind of a quick lay of the land, can, yeah, you guys can say, just, you know, you've got pretty much the arena on the north side of the property and then the creek kind of running through probably the bottom third and then the parking deck, as you can see, to the southwest corner with a plaza off to the southeast corner. Roughly four hundred and thirty thousand square feet total, Western Michigan men's and women's basketball, Western Michigan hockey, K-Wings hockey, and then a event space on the southeast, southwest corner, excuse me. And then a roughly an eleven hundred parking space ramp is being proposed. I do want to highlight real quick before we get into, we did send letters to all of the property owners on the south side of, of Water Street. I think there were four or five. I did meet personally with two of them and kind of went through any comments or concerns. And everybody seemed to be fine that I met with no complaints. They just wanted to understand timing. Our rendering didn't have any curb cuts in them, so they didn't understand how they were going to get into their parking lot. So I had to explain to them that was just a rendering. And really the rationale for this, to move the parking deck south into the right-of-way is really to activate the Arcadia Creek corridor and give it a little bit more space from, from an activity perspective, access for vehicles, and I'll kind of let Tim go from there, so.
Yeah, and and one thing I want to, let's go to the next slide, please. So we're going to zoom in on this, on the Water Street corridor, the parking ramp, and you'll see just the south side of the, of the arena, the event center. So right now, that big blue swath that cuts, cuts through the middle is the Arcadia Creek. And the little white area in the middle of that is where the former Cooley Street crossed the creek. So one could ask, why not just make the ramps skinnier? Why get into the public right-of-way? And the reason for that is in order to have a high-efficiency ramp with two entry and exits, I think it's called a double spiral, double helix, and so that people don't sit in the ramp for too long. This is the minimum width we can accommodate. So our options without modifying the Water Street right-of-way would have been to move that north, which impacts the creek. You, we'd have to either relocate the creek or be over it or it is just not, not a good solution. So we've looked at moving it south and as minimal distance as possible, and that's at seventeen feet. And so you can see with the two large structures, the parking ramp and the event center, there's an opportunity there in the middle for, there's, that's going to be a very busy area. And so if we go to the next slide... Yeah, so these are just the points there. Arcadia Creek bisects the property, the parking deck is a minimum width. We have community gathering space that we're intending to use between the two structures. And as has been touched on already, with all of the utility relocation work we're doing, we really have an opportunity because we are rebuilding Water Street. We're going to tear that up and I'll show you some, some drawings here soon. We've got all new utilities going through there, so that's already part of the, part of the project. So let's go to the next one. So here again is a kind of a zoomed-in portion of that. Water Street is on the, on the bottom, on the south side there. And you can see, we've got the parking ramp in the middle, we have a community commons area on the east side there along Park Street. And then we have a really nice activated community space between the event center to the north and the parking ramp to the south. And so, and we've got basketball courts there, they could play pickleball. This is a gathering, kind of a tailgating area, and then tied together with the, the commons on the east side of the, of the ramp. It's going to be really an exciting place to be, and I've got some other renderings that will show you what that's going to look like. Let's go to the next one. And so this, this gives you an idea, these, these are kind of slides that go for the feel of that area. We're really, like I said, trying to activate it. We want to have moving water and, you know, like a waterfall and some, some pond areas. We want to have big plaza areas where people can gather. And so this is the, this is the look and the feel, the texture of that area that, that we're going towards here. Next slide, please. So here's a, a rendering. This would be from the Park Street, from Park Street looking west along the length of the creek between the two buildings. So again, you've got, you've got some exposed creek there, we want to acknowledge that. We've got the, the two buildings on each side, a lot of, you know, we want some greenery in there, we want some plaza space. The, the two main entrances, or two of the three main entrances to the event center will be in, on this side. There's one kind of closer to West Nidge. And then the, the main entry is going to be on the southeast corner there that lines up with that commons area you saw on the east side of the ramp. There'll be another significant entrance on the north, but that obviously isn't in this view. Let's go to one more, please. Here's a kind of a plaza level view. You can see there's a, this would be the ramp, or excuse me, the, yeah, what am I looking at? Yeah, it'd be the parking ramp on the right-hand side, I believe. Yeah. Yeah, and the event center on the left. We've got some activated water, some more green space, some more plaza, really a, a nice, nice community space. Next slide. And here is sitting in West Nidge Avenue looking west. So here again is this, you know, we've got basketball courts that we're planning on, more, more activation of this space. And if you go to the next slide, we're thinking, you know, this could be tailgating area, it could be a job fair, it could be tied to events that are going on in, in the arena or, or just, you know, a community space as well. It's, it's really, provides a good, a really nice opportunity for that, for that area. So there again, that's, that's why we really want to maximize this space and that seventeen feet, moving that ramp to the south allows us to do that. Let's see, what's the next slide here? Okay, and here's a little bit of engineering details for you. I color-coded it to try and make it a little easier for you, but the, this again, north is up along the south side there. This demonstrates, we, we have the engineering done for all of these utilities. The purple dash line represents a new Consumers Energy duct bank that's going to go in there, and that will be closest to the ramp. And then we have a, a brand-new sanitary sewer that we'll be constructing, a new twenty-four-inch water main and storm sewer, and then new curb and gutter on both sides and sidewalks. And that'll be all completed as part of the arena project. The city actually is participating in a little bit of the sanitary sewer work since they wanted that upsized. But we've got all that worked out, it's already designed, it's out for bid, we know it'll work. Next one, please. And then here again is that same cross-section that Bobby showed you that gives you a, a real feel for what that will look, again, as you're looking from the, from the Park Street side looking west. And I think that's it. What's the next one? And Bobby hit on all of these, complies with the street design manual, fits, all the utilities fit, a new friendly, a pedestrian-friendly corridor, and maximizes that community space like we talked about between the two buildings. And next slide? That's it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any immediate questions for the applicant? Over here? No?
Oh, yes. I think I saw that there was a skybridge connecting the two, is that right?
That's the plan right now, yes.
Thanks.
Good. Anything else? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Seeing nothing else at the minute, we will open the public hearing. If there is anyone who would like to speak to this, please step forward. And remember, we will take call-in after we've cleared the room of comments. That number is eight-eight-eight-three-eight-two-nine-five-five-six. Seeing no one immediately rushing up in the audience, is there anyone on that?
The computer's still thinking. So if you have any questions for applicant or staff, now might be a good time, just to give me a moment.
Any questions for applicant or, oh, we, we have one.
Uh, this is for staff. Could you, Bobby, could you just explain the process, the traffic engineer or justification that they have for the lack of additional outreach in this one?
Um, yes, I, I did pose that same question to the, the traffic engineer. He said, no, it doesn't. He said in one aspect, the road still remains open, but because of the heavier traffic already and planned to be on Michigan and Kalamazoo, he didn't see that this is going to impact patterns. Obviously, there's going to be a pattern change for people to, to use the new venue, but given that, it can still fit the largest vehicles. He didn't see that it would impact the, the traffic pattern, so. And then even in absence of that, the applicant, they sent letters anyways as, as an extra notice beyond the city one.
Is that a comment?
I will check right now, thank you.
Oh. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Yes?
Just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm kind of wondering, and I don't know if it's the applicant or staff that can answer this, but as far as the other small businesses around the area, how would the arena affect them as far as taxes and insurance and things like that?
I, I can't speak to taxes, but I, I don't know if you guys had any information on the economic impact surrounding businesses is the question?
Correct.
Yeah, as far as, I, I, you know, in the planning and zoning realm, I don't know if, what impact on taxes that, that would have. I, I would speculate that it would draw on a lot of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, you know, potential customers is a potential effect of the arena.
Do we anticipate any more requests? We've had a few street vacations, we've had this, which I'm just wondering if there's any others that we should be thinking about.
Not, not that I'm, I'm aware of on this, there's some design thing that's come up.
Not that I'm aware of for the planning commission. I think we will be pursuing some, a couple of variants.
Variants, yeah.
We're still working, working that out with staff on what those will be. Not anticipating any other vacations.
Not a lot.
I think we've got it covered. Hopefully the arena doesn't grow anymore.
Yeah. Very good.
There are no calling comments.
No calling comments, all right. Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Any last technical questions? I will take a motion, and this is a, we are the approving body, right? This is a recommendation, okay. So I'll be looking for a motion to recommend approval to the city commission of the vacation of the northern seventeen feet of Water Street between Park and West Nidge with the two conditions that are in the staff report. And just to repeat those, a four-foot easement be provided as shown on the application exhibit for public utilities and sidewalk. And two, a, any private utility relocation will be provided with an easement or relocated at the expense of the developer.
I will move to approve, to recommend approval.
Any thought on the conditions?
With the conditions.
With the conditions, all right. We have a motion with the conditions. Is there a second?
Okay, I have a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I am just going to voice my trepidation for any vacation in the downtown core that doesn't engage the public. And I just think it's sort of a link that could be stronger, and I think just being in the downtown kind of justifies more outreach.
In my recommending to approve, I am looking at the redesign of Water Street that's proposed in the, in the renderings and by staff and thinking about like, with... with the city's master plan moving forward, if Water Street were to be rebuilt from scratch, which essentially would have to be for this project, what it would look like. And I think this is pretty much exactly what we'd want it to look like with the master plan. And I, I definitely hear the concerns about not getting full community outreach. Um, but the literal only thing that we're losing out of Water Street with this vacation is, um, public parking on both sides, which is being addressed by building a giant parking ramp, ramp right next to it. So I think any foreseeable community issues would have been addressed, especially the fact that the neighboring properties have been contacted even outside of the requirements that the city may have imposed. Um, so I, I definitely hear that concern, but I think this is kind of a best case scenario for a redesign of Water Street.
Other comments or questions, discussion? And looking at the policy, this clearly, in my opinion, meets all the elements of the policy. You know, as you stated, it's, um, still a functioning road, um, with all the elements of this complete streets policy. And, um, you know, I appreciate the efforts to maintain the creek and everything, um, that goes along with, with that piece within the city. So, um, yeah, good stuff. Anything else? Then we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
DeSenzo?
No.
Milliken?
Yes.
Ann Pitts?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Um, great. Uh, discussion action items? Nothing there, so city planner report.
Um, a couple of, um, items looking ahead to, um, next month. We're gonna, so far, there's been no applications received, but, um, we're looking to do some of our annual work there. The, um, so we're looking to do our retreat at that next meeting, and we're going to focus on some education components related to form-based code, particularly our form-based code districts, and some of the, the state resources that Michigan Association of Planning has, is, um, our tentative outline for that. Um, we will, staff will have the annual report for twenty twenty-three. And then as well with that, there is the election of officers, which would occur in April. And then, um, lastly, as some of you know, we have some members terming off. I've been in contact about, um, scheduling interviews. There's been, um, posted for a couple of weeks now, the city posted that there's openings on the, the planning commission, and we will have a total of three openings. So that means who is terming off? That's going to be Commissioner James Pitts, who is, um, at the end of his second term here. Um, thank you for your time on the planning commission for those two years. And then, um, Burgess, um, is at the end of one term and is not seeking to, uh, renew. So thank you for all of your work for, for the last year. And, um, while he's not here, Michael, uh, Harrison is also at the end of his first term, and he has decided not to, uh, renew it either. So, uh, we thank all three of you for, for your work there. Um, and I have a, a gift for those of you that are here.
Yes, thank you all for your service and your time and your contributions. Very much appreciated. No, I like this. Thank you, staff. Can't wait.
I, I guess my predecessors weren't that thoughtful.
Hey, raising the bar, Bobby. I like it.
So we will be, um, we, there's a, a, a committee, uh, made up of three members. Thank you, um, DeSenzo, um, Curtis, and Chambers for volunteering for that. Um, I'll be in touch tomorrow with some, some dates and times. But, um, thank you again for those of you that, um, served on the planning commission. And that's all I have for updates and news.
Before you leave, how is the, did you get a decent number of applicants for, since we have three seats to fill?
Yep, um, six applicants, and we're going to interview four.
Okay. Good. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Um, any questions for Bobby or Christina? All right, we got the site plan list, so we will open up the public comments again for non-agenda items. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Again, um, while we wait for the crowds and the audience to storm forward, the call-in number is eight 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 three eight two nine five five six. If you're watching online and would like to call in, eight 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 three eight two nine five five six. Does that mean someone called it? No? Okay, well, seeing no one and seeing no one online, we'll move on to the next item. City Commission Liaison, Commissioner Prado.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, take a moment to echo thanks to Commissioners Pitts, Burgess, and Harrison for your service. Uh, I know it takes a lot to step up in these roles, and certainly you all are involved in plenty beyond this work as well, but thank you for your, for your time and services. Um, encourage the community to definitely put forward names and encourage peers to, uh, consider serving, uh, because we need people like you to step forward and do this work, so thank you. Uh, just, I promised, uh, on a continuous basis to come back and close the loop. Um, so when you recommend something, comes to the full city commission to let you know how things turned out. Turns out, we generally agree with everything that you recommend. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, we adopted ordinances to rezone the thirteen sixteen South Park Street as your recommendation, and the one oh seven Reed, which were two, uh, properties that were inadvertently omitted from the two thousand, uh, pieces that were reviewed previously. So, uh, we did approve both of those at the last meeting here on Monday. Um, also wanted to take a minute to just mention, uh, that we have a publication that comes out every, uh, two months now. Hopefully you all receive this as well, the, uh, count, uh, the City View publication. Uh, we actually mailed it this, uh, month with both the, uh, City View and the View from the Curb, so two publications in one. Uh, but you should be getting these every two months. But what's, uh, particularly special is aside from trying to improve communication, uh, with our community, which has been a big goal of the commission, um, you'll notice things like this. So starting Monday, some pretty significant construction projects started. You probably have seen those, like along Westnidge and White's Road. Uh, but also there's some pretty significant ones happening with Inkster Bridge on Bronson Boulevard and, uh, coming up on Ransom as well. Uh, so what's neat is, you know, if you're a resident and if you're maybe not scoping out every post on Facebook or maybe would miss it, it gives you the opportunity to see what's coming up and shows you detours and gives you advice on how to avoid a headache in traffic. And so, um, we're going to continue to do this, and it's a great way to inform people about what's going on. But, um, you know, with that, it's, a, a good transition is the fact that this week really kicked off construction season, which is hard to believe considering it's the first week of March, but, but there, that is. So anyways, that's all I have for you tonight. Uh, thanks for all you do and your time.
Thank you very much. Um, planning commissioner comments? Any planning commissioners have comments? Please.
Well, uh, since it is my last meeting, I just want to say some thank yous. Uh, say thank you to the other, uh, commissioners. Um, thank you for serving and doing this. And, um, I know a lot of you do a lot of things beyond what you do here, and it's appreciated. Also, certainly want to thank the staff, the planning department, a very talented, professional group, very impressive, and thank you for all you do. Um, this has been an interesting thing to do, and I thank everybody for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay, well, again, just, I want to thank everybody too. It, it's been a pleasure and an honor. It's, it's been a roller coaster, you know, but it, it's been nice. I've seen, like, this room full with people, and I've seen it empty. And sometimes it, you know, we have to make those hard decisions. And I feel good to, that we're leaving it in, in hands of you other commissioners, that you, that there's a diverse group. And it, it's just been, it's been nice, uh, you know, just to have that experience, to, to really see the backdrops of what the city goes through to make sure that, um, that the city grows. You know, the staff is, I take my hat off to you guys because I see that you guys have worked very hard throughout the years, and it's impressive. So, again, it's been a pleasure and an honor serving with you guys. And hopefully, just, you guys will see me on the other end, you know, and I get a chance to, just, come to you guys and, you know, ask for different things, so, thank you.
Other comments or anything else? Well, this, I'll thank the two of you and, and Michael as well for your work. This is not always the most glamorous or most fun, uh, work at all. And oftentimes, we're, um, people are only interested in talking to us when they're mad at us. Uh, and so, um, but it's an important job, and I appreciate, uh, you guys taking the time out of your schedules to do that. So, so thank you. Thank you for your contributions to the, to the discourse here. Other than that, um, spring is upon us. Enjoy, uh, and we'll see you in a month. All right, with the agenda being cleared, we're adjourned.
Thanks for coming. Always rate the second time.